Hey everybody, welcome back. We're super excited to have you back with us tonight in our part 11, 11 of Joshua. Uh, we're in the book of Joshua and uh, we are slowly and methodically walking through. Tonight, we're gonna take a, a little um, uh, different take. We're going to venture out of the book of Joshua for the next three weeks or so and talk about giants, the Nephilim, the fallen angels, the cross, the blood. In your, in your notes, it's called the rebellion, the fall, the giants, the blood, and the flood. And so, we're just gonna kinda put these things together over the next couple of weeks and you're gonna see the word of God come alive like never before. Our intent here tonight uh, is to start this journey through the Old Testament, through the New Testament, from Genesis to Revelation. As we've been walking through the book of Joshua, uh, Joshua is a physical conquest that is mimicked in the book of Ephesians in the New Testament as a spiritual conquest. And it will be fulfilled in a physical and spiritual conquest in the book of Revelation and the return of Jesus Christ. And so, I wanna just kinda take us through parts of our Bible that we may or may not have heard before. And so, I really wanna encourage you to do this. Go to our website, whitestonechurchtx.com and download the notes for tonight. They're pretty exhaustive. It's like nine pages. Uh, and so, there's no way we're gonna cover, cover everything in the notes in one night. But I want you to go and download the notes. It's a lot of scripture. Uh, those are the best kinda notes to have. Um, go to our YouTube channel. You can um, look at old uh, videos from Joshua, the first 10, if you've missed any of those. You can do the same thing on our website. Uh, if you wanna get our notes delivered directly to your inbox, your email box, contact us on our website. Go to the contact us, uh, scroll down and give us your information. We'll put you on our email list. Uh, one last request. Go to YouTube, subscribe to the whitestonechurchtx.com or whitestonechurchtx YouTube channel uh, as we reach closer to our goal of a thousand viewers so that we could simultaneously air on YouTube and Facebook. Um, so, thank you so much for being here. Let's get started. Father God, we ask that you protect us tonight. God, we pray that you would open up our eyes and our ears and our hearts and our minds to hear Holy Spirit your word. That God, you would uh, prevent distraction, prevent um, uh, our own logic, our own, our own uh, theology, God. We pray that nobody would believe what Cameron says, but they would believe what the word of God says. And so, Father God, you be the filter for our study tonight, our study tonight. In Jesus' name and everybody said, amen. Um, we're gonna start with your notes. And so, again, grab your Bible, grab your notes and grab something to write with. Um, I have today, I just kinda worked on a, a table of contents, if you will, a summary of, of the topics we're gonna discuss over the next three weeks. And so, we'll try to capture and, and, and walk through as many of those as possible. But I just wanna read through them. The book of Joshua, part 11, uh, we're gonna talk about the rebellion, the, the original rebellion in the garden. We're gonna talk about the fall, the fall of angels, the fall of man. We're gonna talk about giants, the Nephilim, uh, the Repha- Rephahim, the Gibberim, uh, different names, the mighty men of renown, uh, the men of old in the Bible. We're gonna talk about the flood, uh, Noah's flood. Um, we're gonna talk about the blood, the flood of the blood that came from the cross, Jesus Christ. Um, so, we're gonna start. I'll just kinda go through this. The rebellion and the temptation, uh, it will be the first topic we discuss tonight. It's Satan's lust for worship and knowledge. The curse and the pronouncement, uh, the man, the woman, the snake, toil, labor, enmity, the, the curses. The counterattack, the watchers, the flood, the tower of Babel, the nation, uh, Israel, the struggle, the blood of Jesus, the end times and the flood. So, so we have the flood, then the end time and the flood. The deception, the revelation, the return. So, we're gonna walk through uh, these topics over the next few weeks. And so, uh, highly, highly suggest that you get these notes off our website, uh, and so that you could follow along. But let's start here. We're gonna talk about the rebellion and the temptation, the fall of Lucifer, Satan's lust for worship and knowledge. So, before we go to Luke chapter 10 and Isaiah 14, get those ready in your Bible uh, or on your notes. We're gonna go to the scripture. I just wanna remind us that Satan is a created being. He is not the creator. The creator is God himself, Jehovah, the creator. In the beginning, God created. Not Satan, not uh, not the angels, not Adam and Eve. God created. So, sometimes when we're talking about God against the devil, there's this, there's this uh, meme or a gift that goes around on the internet. Uh, I've seen it before and, and I, I understand where it's coming from, but you'll see God fighting and then you'll see an equal devil fighting God. And, and it's like God is equal to the devil and the devil is equal to God. And, and that Satan is an equal foe. Um, Satan's a defeated foe. He's a created being. God's the creator. God is always bigger and stronger and smarter. And Satan is created. He's not the creator. He is a foe. Now, when it comes to you and I, without the blood of Jesus, he is a foe that we need to be concerned about. But when we talk about him versus God, they're not equal foes. And so, I wanna remind us that Satan never knows what God's next move is. Satan does not know everything. God is all-knowing. Satan is not in one place more, he's not in more than one place at a time. God is everywhere at one time. Satan is limited to his creativeness or his, his create, um, he is limited to his, his uh, um, location. Satan doesn't know the future. God knows the future. Now, what Satan does have is a full grasp of eternity. He has a full grasp of creation until today. He totally understands the word of God. He knows every Greek and Hebrew uh, translation. He, he completely understands the word of God better than you and I do. Doesn't mean he believes it, but he understands it. So, when we're talking about Satan, we have to remember that he's always behind. He's always playing catch-up. He doesn't know when Jesus will return. He didn't know when or where Jesus would be born. He didn't know about the cross. He didn't know about the entity of, that God was gonna put between he and at, and Eve in the garden. He didn't know when the flood was gonna happen. He didn't know that Moses was gonna be floated down the Nile and raised by Pharaoh's own daughter. He didn't know these things. He didn't even know Corinthians tells us that if he nailed Jesus to the cross, he would be defeated. Satan is always behind. We have to remember that. So, let's dive in. We're gonna start Luke chapter 10, verse 18. Jesus makes this statement to his disciples. "I saw Satan fall like lightning from where?" Heaven. There came a time, and a point in time when Satan was kicked out of heaven. Now, Revelation, chapter 12, we're gonna go there. So, so go to the third page in your notes. Revelation, chapter 12, verse 7, it says Satan was thrown out of heaven. Now, in Revelation 12:7, it says, "And a war broke out in heaven. Michael and his angels fought and the dragon, with the dragon." "The dragon and his angels fought, but they did not prevail, nor was a place found for them in heaven any longer. So, the great dragon was cast out, that serpent of old called the devil and Satan, who deceives the whole world. He was cast to the earth with his angels, who were cast with him." Now, go back to Isaiah 14. I just wanted to, I, I, I got those out of order in your notes, but I wanna remind us that Satan has been cast out of heaven. Heaven used to be his domain, his dwelling place. Heaven used to be the place that Satan lived in. He was created with this uh, as, with this name called Lucifer. So, when we talk about Satan, his angelic name was Lucifer. Now, we today equate Lucifer with bad, Lucifer with the devil. But before the fall, Lucifer was a beautiful angel. He was the most perfect angel in heaven. So, let's go to Isaiah 14, verse 12, and let's just read what the Bible says. We're gonna read out of Isaiah 14 and Ezekiel 28. Let's just read about Satan. So, you're gonna get some understanding about him before his fall and what happened and what he said, and then what happened after the fall. So, let's let the scripture speak for itself. Isaiah 14, verse 12. "O how you have fallen from heaven, O Lucifer, son of the morning." Some translations will say day star. "O son of the morning, O Lucifer, you were the sun of the morning. You were the, you were the bright day star. You were shining. How you were cut to the ground, you who weakened the nations." Now, I want you to underline with your own pen the word nations there. "For you have said in your heart, 'I will ascend.'" Now, I also want you to underline the five I-wills of Satan. "For you have said in your heart, 'I will ascend into heaven.'" Now, he's already in heaven. What that ascend means, "I will ascend to the, to the position of godhood. I will be, I am equal to Elohim, Jehovah, creator, El- Elion, the most high God. I will ascend into heaven. I will exalt my throne above the stars of God." Now, the stars of God are other angels. It's not talking about twinkle, twinkle, little star like these bright lights in the sky at night. But he says, "I will exalt my throne above the other angels in heaven." So, stars in heaven are equated to angels, or the stars of God. And, and that's the reference, stars of God, not stars in the heaven. Um, so, the second I-will. "I will exalt my throne above the stars of God." The third I-will. "I will also sit on the mount of the congregation on the farthest sides of the north." Now, this mount of the congregation, now, there is a congregation of rulers in heaven. Satan says, "I'll sit on the mount of the congregation. I will be supreme." His fourth I-will, verse 14, Isaiah 14:14. "I will ascend above the heights of the clouds." His fifth I-will. "I will be like the most high." Now, the most high is El-Elion. El-Elion is the most high God. That is Jehovah God's title. Elion is his title. So, Satan lists these five I-wills. "I will exalt myself above the stars of heaven," or the stars of God. "I will ascend into heaven. I will sit on the mount of the congregation." In other words, I'll be the ruler. I'll be the judge. He says, "I will ascend above the heights of the clouds. I will be like God. I will be God." Verse 15. "Yet you shall be brought down to shield." So, God corrects Satan. He says, "Yeah, okay, whatever I will, mister little guy. You shall be brought down to shield to the lowest depths of the pit. Those who see you will gaze at you and consider saying, 'Is this the man?'" Now, that word, "the man," is an insult. "Is this the man? Is this the boy? Is this the, this isn't even the angel. This is, is this the man who has made the earth tremble, who shook kingdoms, who made the world as a wilderness and destroyed its cities, who did not open the house of his prisoners? All the kings of the nations, all of them sleep in glory, everyone in his house." I'll let you read the, the rest, but God in Isaiah 14 is saying, "Hey, listen, Satan exalted himself in heaven." He, he put out the five I-wills of Satan. Now, let's switch over to Ezekiel 28. And I wanna show you something I just discovered myself, but here are the five you were of God. Here's the five you were. Uh, I don't know how you would say that, but God says, "You say I will, but I'll say you were." So, God's gonna give us the words, if you will, of Satan. So, go to Ezekiel chapter 28, verse 11. Ezekiel 28:11. "Moreover, the word of God came to me, saying, 'Son of man, take up a lamentation for the king of Tyree.'" Now, this king of Tyree was a real person, but it's also talking about Satan. He's talking about his rulership over a certain territory, not in the physical, but his rulership over a territory in the, in the spiritual. He says, "Son of man, take up a lamentation for the king of Tyree and say to him, 'Thus says the Lord your God, you were.'" So, Satan has five I-wills. God has five you were. So, he says, "You were the seal of perfection. You were full of wisdom and perfect in beauty." So, Lucifer before his fall was perfect, full of wisdom and full of beauty. He was like, he was, remember when God says, "Adam and Eve, he creates me, he says, 'You are good.'" Now, that, that word, "perfect" there, isn't the same word to describe Jesus, but it's like, there's no fault in you. There's nothing that God could have created. There was no way he could have created Lucifer better. There was nothing he lacked, if you will. He says, "You were the seal of perfection, full of wisdom and perfect in beauty. You were in Eden." Now, I highlighted that on your notes. I want, we're gonna come back to this place called Eden, the garden of God. Now, Eden was the garden of God. It's not just a reference to the world. It's a reference to a location on the world, the location on the map, if you will. "Every precious stone was your covering, the sardass, the topaz, the diamond, the beryll, the onyx, the jasper, sapphire, turquoise, emerald with gold. The worship, the workmanship of your timbrels and pipes was prepared for you on the day..." Excuse me. "On the day you were created," verse 14. "You were the anointed cherub who covers. I established you. You were on the holy mountain of God. You walked back and forth in the midst of the fiery stones." That's a, that's a great thing to, to look into, the fiery stones. "You were perfect in your ways from the day you were created." So, God gave him the five you were in response to Satan's five I-wills. He says, "Until iniquity was found in you, by the abundance of your trading or craftiness, you became filled with violence within and you sinned. Therefore, I cast you as a profane thing out of the mountain of God, and I destroy you, O cherubim covering, or covering cherub, from the midst of the fiery stones. Your heart was lifted up because of your beauty. You corrupted your wisdom for the sake of your splendor. I cast you to the ground. I laid you before kings, that they may gaze at you. You defiled your sanctuaries by the multitude of your iniquity, by the iniquity of your trading or craftiness, your deception." I want you just to reference, "you defiled your sanctuaries." Well, sanctuary isn't these buildings. You defiled your inward parts, your inward sanctuary. That's what that means. "Therefore, I brought you from the fire of your midst. It devoured you, and it turned you to ashes upon the earth and sight of all who saw you." The rest is there. "You shall never, you shall ever, you shall be no more forever." Satan is thrown out of heaven. I want us to grasp that. When Satan is thrown out of heaven, he's cast down to earth. Now, when that happens, he thou therefore hates earth. He hates this realm. Why? Because he's the prince of the power of the air. He doesn't want the earth as his habitation. He wants to dwell in the air. He wants to dwell in this supernatural. He wants to rule this supernatural territory. But he's now cast to earth. Remember, he said, "I'll extend, I'll ascend above the thrones. I'll ascend above the stars. I'll ascend to, above the clouds. I'm gonna rise up to the height and sit on the mount of the congregation. I'm gonna be in control, large and in charge." And God says, "No, you're going down." So, Satan hates the dominion, if you will, of the earth. He hates this territory. He hates who is on this territory. So, let's just keep learning a little bit about what the Bible says about Satan. Go to Job, chapter 1, verse 6. We won't read the whole thing. You, you have it in your notes. But let's read the first couple verses. Job, chapter 1, verse 6. "Now, there was a day when the sons of God came to present themselves before the Lord, and Satan came with them." There's a day that the sons of God came to present themselves to the Lord, and Satan came along with them. Now, just because Satan is cast out, doesn't mean that he doesn't still have access to heaven. Heaven is not where he dwells. He's not his home anymore. It's not his dominion. It's not his territory. But for some reason, he can still, he still has access to it. He can still go to and fro, from it and to it. So, we see in Job that he goes with the sons of God. Now, the sons of God are what? They're angels. They're created beings. He goes with the sons of God to present themselves to God. And then, he has this debate, you can read it for yourself, about this man named Job. Now, let's go to another verse in Job, Job, chapter 2. And this is the second round of Job's, you know, horrible uh, circumstance, but the second round, again, Job, chapter 2, verse 1. "Again, there was a day when the sons of God came to present themselves before the Lord, and Satan also came among them to present himself to the Lord." So, we see that Satan still has spiritual uh, movement. He still is the accuser of the brethren. He still has access to uh, talk with or dispute with God. Now, that may sound a little crazy, but that is what your Bible says. So, we're just gonna go with what the Bible says. Um, so, before we go too far, what I'm trying to build here is a case that Satan has been cast out. Satan is a fallen angel. Satan has taken a third of the angels from heaven with him. So, there is a third of God's creation, a third of his angels, who we would consider fallen. Now, they're not demons and uh, they are not um, uh, you know, they're not just demons. They are fallen angels. So, when we reference Lucifer and we reference the sons of God that followed him in the rebellion, I want us to start to use the terminology, these are the fallen. These are the fallen angels. Now, we'll come back to Psalms 82 and we'll come back to Jude 5, then in your notes. We'll come back to those a little bit, but you can read those for yourself at another time. I wanna go to the second part. We're gonna kinda dig in. So, we're trying to lay some groundwork. So, I appreciate your patience. But we're gonna go to the curse and the pronouncement. Now, this is where we find ourselves in Genesis, chapter 3. We find Adam and Eve living in the garden, in the paradise of God. Now, before chapter 3, God says, "Go forth, be fruitful and multiply." In other words, advance the kingdom, advance the territory of God's rule and reign. Don't just stay in the garden of Eden, but go to the whole earth and advance the kingdom of God. Don't just stay here doing your thing, but advance. Go forth, be fruitful, multiply. We see in Genesis 3. So, go to Genesis, chapter 3, verse 3, um, and we'll read. "Now, the serpent was more cunning than any beast of the field which the Lord God had made. And he said to the woman, 'Has God indeed said, "You shall not eat of every tree of the garden?'" And the woman said to the serpent, "'We may eat of the trees of the garden, but of the tree that is in the midst of the garden, God says, "You shall not eat of it, nor shall you touch it lest you die.'" Then the serpent said this. Now, Satan says to Eve, "You will not die." So, what did he just do? He called God a liar. He presented Lucifer's wisdom. Remember? "Oh, you Lucifer, who are full of wisdom, but his wisdom has twisted." And Jesus, God says in Ezekiel, "Your wisdom has been spent on your splendor, on your self-gratification, on your self-glory, and now your wisdom is vain, and your wisdom is now fallen." So, he throws out his wisdom to Eve. He says, "You won't die, for God knows, the day that you open, the day that you eat of the tree, your eyes will be opened and you'll be like God, knowing good and evil." Hey Eve, God's holding out on you. You want some real knowledge? You want some real uh, understanding? Listen, the day you eat of this tree, you'll be like God. What is Satan's MO? He wants to be like God. He wants to be God. The Antichrist will, will want to be worshipped like God. He says, "Eve, if you eat of this, you'll be like God." "So, the woman saw the tree was good for food, that it was pleasant to the eyes, and the tree was desirable to make one wise. She took of its fruit and also gave some to her husband, and he ate. Then both of their eyes were opened, and they realized they were naked." God comes in, uh, verse 9, God says to Adam, "Where are you?" He says, "I heard your voice or your sound." I love the word "sound." "I heard your sound in the void, in the garden, and I was afraid because I was naked." God says, "Who told you you were naked?" Adam says, "The woman you gave me ate the fruit from the snake that told her it was good." So, you know, he diverts. Let's pick up in verse um, 14, or verse 13. "And the Lord God says to the woman..." So, he's punishing the three now. "The Lord God says to the woman, 'What is this that you have done?' The woman says, 'The serpent deceived me, and I ate.' So, the Lord said to the serpent, 'Because you've done this, you are cursed more than all the cattle, more than every beast of the field. On your belly you shall go, and you shall eat dust all the days of your life.'" Now, verse 15 in your Bible, I highly recommend that you underline it. Now, who tempted Eve? This fallen Lucifer, this fallen angel. This fallen angel has wisdom. He has influence. He's crafty. He's, he's deceitful. But he also paints it up to be brilliant and bright. He also disguises his, his, he doesn't come in with a pitchfork and, and red horns and say, "I'm the mean devil." He comes in and says, "I'm the good guy." So, this is verse 15 in your Bible. It is so important. He says, "And I will put enmity..." Now, this is God talking to, to the devil. He says, "I will put enmity between you, Satan, and the woman, between your seed and her seed." Now, women don't carry the seed. The man carries the seed. So, what is God talking about? Between the woman's seed and Satan's seed. He says, "I'm gonna put a war between the two of you. I'm putting, you're gonna be enemies. I'm putting enmity between you." He says, "Between your seed and her seed, he shall bruise your head, otherwise you'll crush the head of the snake, and you shall bruise his heel." So, what God tells Satan in the garden is the pronouncement. The curse is the sin. The pronouncement is the solution to the sin. God tells the devil in the garden, "Hey, listen, because you deceived this woman and because you've done this thing, I'm cutting your legs off. You're gonna crawl on your belly. You'll be despised, the lowest form of animal on the earth, blah, 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 blah." But he says, "Listen, I'm gonna put a war between you and the woman. I'm gonna put a war between Satan, between your seed and her seed. Her seed will crush your head." Now, how do you kill a snake? You step on its head. How do you pick up a snake? You pick it up by the head. You don't pick it, uh, the tail of a snake up. The head represents authority and it represents dominion over. So, what God just told Satan was, "Listen, this woman will have a baby, and that baby will destroy your authority. Now, you'll strike his heel, but he will crush or bruise your authority, crush your head. He will destroy your, your, your ability to influence." So, in the garden, and some of you've heard this before, in the garden, Satan is put on notice. The woman is your enemy. Now, you hate the man still, but the lady's gonna have a baby. Well, what is this pronouncement? This is the pronouncement of the virgin birth. This is the pronouncement in the garden of Jesus. This is the pronouncement that Jesus Christ will rule and reign and destroy Satan. Now, what I started off with, Satan is a, is a created being. He does not know the future. Sometimes we give the devil way too much credit. We say, "Oh, he knows my thoughts. He's in my head. He knows tomorrow." He doesn't. Satan had no idea who the Messiah, who this seed would be. He didn't know the time that the baby would be born. He didn't know the location. He didn't know his name. He absolutely assumed ignorantly that the very first baby she has was the Messiah. So, we get to fast forward in our Bible from this event to the birth of Cain and Abel. So, let's go to, in your notes, we'll go to um, verse 20. No, I'm sorry. Um, chapter 4, verse 8. Chapter 4, verse 8. "Now Cain talked with Abel, his brother, and it came to pass, when they were in the field, that Cain rose up against Abel, his brother, and killed him." What we find is when Adam and Eve uh, are removed from the garden, they have their first two male children, Cain and Abel. Now, some scholars believe they may have been twins because it says in your Bible that Adam knew Eve. In other words, they were intimately sex- Adam knew Eve, in other words, they were intimately sexually, they were intimate. He knew Eve, she birthed Cain and then birthed Abel, it doesn't say he knew her again. So, whether they were twins or whether there is a few years between them, we see that Satan now views these two young men as his archenemy. He's not afraid of Adam, he's not afraid of Eve, he's afraid of Eve's children. He's afraid of the seed, he's afraid of the children. So, he starts his attempt to deceive and corrupt Cain and Abel. He doesn't know which one will be the Messiah. He just knows one of the two will be the Messiah that will crush his head. So, he corrupts Cain's heart, he can't for some reason corrupt Abel's, but he convinces Cain to kill Abel. Now, if you were the devil and you knew that the woman would produce a seed, you would think that you just scored the victory of all victories the day that Cain killed Abel. So, you could notice that Satan was probably high-fiving other fallen angels and fist pumping the air going, "I got him, I got him, I I got him." The Bible says that when Cain kills Abel, that Cain is driven off to another part to to live the the rest of his life. But that in in chapter five, verse one, God gives Cain uh uh Adam and Eve another son named Seth to replace Abel. So, we'll see in chapter, Genesis, chapter five, we will see the progression, the lineage from Adam all the way to Noah. Now, I wanna pick up in chapter five, Genesis, chapter five, verse twenty-one. Noah has a son named Seth, Seth has a son, Seth's son has a son, has a son, all the way down to verse twenty-one, Enoch. One of Adam's great-great-great-grandsons is a guy named Enoch. Now, all this time Satan, all this time that Adam and Eve are having children, Satan is scared because he can't figure out which one is the Messiah. So, if you're the devil, again, your concern is that one of these children is the birth child. One of these kids is the Messiah. You're upset that God gave them another son named Seth. For whatever reason, Satan couldn't kill Seth, he couldn't kill Seth's kids, he couldn't kill, you know, so generations go by, years go by. And Satan is trying to destroy the lineage of God, he's trying to destroy the offspring of Eve because he doesn't know who the Messiah is. So, when we get down to Genesis, chapter five, verse twenty-one, "One of Adam's great-great-grandsons is a guy named Enoch." Enoch lived sixty-five years, so chapter five, verse twenty-one, Enoch lived sixty-five years and begot Methuselah. Methuselah is a well-known person in the Bible because he's the oldest man in recorded biblical history to live. He lived, you know, over nine hundred and fifty years, like nine hundred and eighty years or something. Um, and he begot Methuselah. After that, he begot, after after he begot Methuselah, Enoch walked with God three hundred years and had sons and daughters. So, all the days of Enoch were three hundred and sixty-five. "And Enoch walked with God, and he was not, for God took him." Methuselah lived a hundred and eighty-seven years and begot Lamech. After he begot Molech, Methuselah lived seven hundred and eighty-two years and had sons and daughters. All the days of Methuselah were nine hundred and sixty-nine years old. Lamech lived a hundred and eighty-two years and had a son, and he called his son Noah. Now, I know I'm going fast, I'm going through this, but this is what I'm trying to get at. From the garden to Noah is two thousand years in biblical history. How do we come to that number? In Genesis, chapter five, if you follow the lineage of all these men, it tells you how old they lived and how old Noah was when the flood comes. That is approximately two thousand years. For two thousand years, Satan is worried that one of these men being born is the Messiah. And he can't keep killing them all one at a time. He can't keep convincing them, he can't keep corrupting them. So, if you are Satan, how would you corrupt mankind? What would you do? Now, this is where our journey begins. This is where we will walk through scripture and realize that there is more there's more to our Bible than than we've probably realized. For two thousand years, we only get six chapters of biblical history. So, for the first third of the earth's life, according to scripture, the earth is about sixty-five hundred years old. For the first third of the earth's existence, we get six chapters in your Bible. Then for the next two thousand years, we get almost a whole, we we get the whole Old Testament. We get, you know, thirty uh plus books written about, you know, the next two thousand years. And for the last two thousand years, we have the New Testament, plus all of our our own recorded history. But for this first two thousand years, we we don't get a whole lot of information. But there's more information there than we've been led to believe. And so, this is kinda where our journey begins. Satan is out to pervert and destroy the bloodline of Christ. One of his tactics is to use his fallen angels to pervert the bloodline. Now, angels, not just fallen and not 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 just the good angels. Angels are the sons of God in scripture. Sons of God are given territorial rule and reign over God's creation. They are basically co- um co-ruling the earth with God. So, what we do know about biblical history is that there are different princes, a prince is a son of the king. There are different princes that have rule and reign over physical territory of the earth. We'll look at Daniel in in later messages, but for example, in the book of Daniel, we we learned that the king of Persia withstood an angel. It's not the physical ruler, but it is, but it is about, it is, it is a ruler in the spiritual uh uh atmosphere. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna see how we have different rulers that are over different regions. So, I wanna say it like this, um because uh just to kinda bring some clarity. Fallen angels were given dominion over God's earth. I think we could understand that we have the king and then we have his sons, and his sons have different rule and reign over the earth. But the sons fallen followed Lucifer. And so, their rule and reign became perverted, their rule and reign became distorted, their rule and reign became corrupt. One of the tactics of Satan was to use his fallen angels, his son, uh his his co-brothers, if you will, to use the sons of God, the fallen sons of God, to co-mingle with women on the earth, to have sex with earthly women, to create a bloodline that was tainted and deceived. That tainting and that deception created a race of people called the Nephilim or the giants. So, we're fixing to read that in Genesis, chapter six, but let me give the basis, then we'll then we'll bring in the facts. The basis is that Satan is out to pervert the bloodline of mankind. He's out to distort the DNA, to distort the uh uh purity of mankind. If he can't kill us one by one, he will quote-unquote taint the water or taint the birthing process. He'll taint the blood so that what is birthed is not fully human or it's not fully uh um created by God. And there's no way that the Messiah could come from a tainted bloodline. So, we know that the bloodline is extremely important in scripture, we see it all through scripture. But here's 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 my point. We're gonna read in Genesis, chapter six, about how the bloodline is has been perverted. So, let's just go there, Genesis, chapter six. And we'll start in verse one. Genesis, chapter six, verse one. It says, and and I'm gonna, in your notes, I put three different translations because I want you to see it, regardless of the translation that you're reading out of. I'm reading out of the New King James, it's my favorite, but out of the New King James, it reads like this. Genesis, chapter six, verse one. "Now it came to pass, when men," so I want you to take your marker, your highlighter, your pen and underline, "men." We have a type of creation. It came to pass, when men, your NIV would say, "human beings." Uh, there came a time, it came to pass, when men began to multiply on the face of the earth. And daughters were born to them, so underline "men" and underline "daughters." Men and daughters, these are both earthly beings. Men on the earth, on the face, daughters were born to men on the earth. Verse two. "That the sons of God saw the daughters of men." Now, those sons of God there are not earthly people, they're not earthly men. These are angels, these are sons of God. These are not men on the earth, these aren't daughters on, these are sons of God. "When the sons of God saw the daughters of men." Now, we we see daughters of men, these aren't daughters of the sons of God. These are not earthly beings. These are not human human beings, these are spiritual angels, these are angels from God. These are sons of God. "When the sons of God saw the daughters of men, that they were beautiful, and they took wives for themselves, all whom they chose." So, what happens? The sons of God take daughters of men as their wives or to co-mingle with them. And the Lord says, verse three, "My spirit shall not strive with men forever, for he is in deep flesh, yet his day shall be a hundred and twenty years." That's not a lifespan, that's not a maximum lifespan, that's a hundred and twenty years I'm gonna flood the earth. It's a pronouncement of the flood. There were, verse four, here's the key. "There were giants on the earth in those days." So, I want you to underline the word giants, if you're reading out the NIV, it says, "The Nephilim were on the on the earth." There were giants on the earth in those days, so these giants are these Nephilim. These are not humans, these are not sons of God. This is a third type of of being. So, we have the men who are on the earth, the daughters that were born to men. We have sons of God, and now we have giants or Nephilim. So, now we see three different types of of beings. So, verse, verse four, "There were giants on the earth in those days and also afterward." After what? After the flood. When was this written? This was written after the flood, this was not written before the flood. Moses is writing Genesis, when he goes to to get the Ten Commandments, he's on the mountain for for thirty days, he's on the mountain all the time with God, God's giving him, uh, hey, hey Moses, you weren't here for Genesis one through six, so write this down, this is what happened. I'm just verbatim, this isn't his opinion, this is his physical view, this is just him writing down. Says, "There were giants on the earth in those days and also afterwards, when the sons of God came into the daughters of men and they bore children to them." Well, who are the giants? Who are the Nephilim? These are the children of the sons of God and the daughters of men. So, when a fallen angel procreates with the with the earthly woman, their creation, their offspring, if you will, is not heavenly and it's not earthly. It is this dual, it is this half-breed is what I like to call it, it is half-fallen angel, half-woman. Now, when you hear this for the first time, you go, "What in the world, what kinda science fiction is Pastor Cameron reading? What what kinda science fi, this sounds like Greek mythology, this sounds like si- science fiction." I need you to grasp this concept because as I first started down this this study seven or eight years ago now, I had to come to the realization that Greek mythology was written after the Bible. Greek mythology was written after Genesis, chapter six. Science fiction is written after these events. This is pre-recorded today, four thousand years ago. When God says that sons of God co-mingled with daughters of men and their offspring are giants, they're the Nephilim, then we have to take God's word at face value. And we have to realize, okay, I don't understand this, but there must be something to this. So, as we journey further into scripture and we come to stories like David and Goliath. Goliath is one of the offspring of these Nephilim. Goliath is a giant in the Old Testament. And we all grew up reading the story, listening to the story, understanding the story, that David goes and fights a giant and he destroys the giant with a slingshot. Little rock destroys this big giant. And we're all told, this giant's ten feet tall, his spear weighs eighteen pounds, his armor is like an eighty-pound uh 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 chest shield. Um, we we grasp, well, he's just a big guy. He wasn't just a big guy. He is a product of fallen angels and earthly women. Now, for those who have a hard time grasping this, let me remind you and and we can go there later, but in the story of Sodom and Gomorrah in the Old Testament, Sodom and Gomorrah is famous for their sexual perversion, their sexual de- uh deviance. Abraham says, "Hey God, will you save the city if I can find fifty people there?" Sure. Can't find fifty, how about forty? Sure, thirty, twenty, ten. God says, "Enough is enough, go get Lot, get him out." So, God sends two what into the city? He sends two angels. Now, these angels are not fallen angels, they're holy angels. Fallen and holy angels are still sons of God. One is rebelled, one is not. These two angels go into the city and the men of the city tell Lot, "Bring out the men so that we can rape them and have sex with them." These angels, you cannot distinguish that they were angels versus men. So, the men of the city says, "Bring us those men so that we could have sex with them." But they didn't know that those men weren't just men, they were angels. The Bible in Hebrews says, "Be careful how you treat other people because you may unknowingly be entertaining an angel." So, the person on the street corner may not be a bum, he may or she may be an angel. That person in the grocery store may or may not be an angel. That person that rescued you that night or helped you that night may have, may not have been a real police officer or EMT or person just happened to be there, it may have been an angel in disguise. So, when we know about, what we know about angels, whether they're fallen or unfallen, is that physically they have attributes. And physically, they can disguise themselves or make themselves to appear as normal as you and I. They don't all have these big wings and are standing there like, "Ooh." Because if they were, you would realize, "Oh, that's not a person, that's an angel." Now, that goes either way, fallen or holy, unfallen angel. So, when we read this, we have to grasp that these fallen angels came to the earth. And these fallen angels ruled over territories in the earth. Now, all sorts of folklore and and uh stories from all sorts of different nations and cultures and tribes as far back as as pre-deluge or pre-flood uh uh that we have documentation of, there are culture after culture that talks about god-like creatures coming to earth, ruling over mankind. Now, this is where I want you just to to stay with me as we as we journey down this this pathway. Pre-flood, could it have been that fallen angels came to earth and ruled over mankind? And mankind would have considered them as gods, they would have considered them as supreme beings. When it says that these fallen angels came and took daughters of men, they didn't just come down one day and invade the towns and and grab these women and and run to the hills with them. Because they had to have sex with them, they had to procreate with them. And this wasn't just a one-time thing. Could it have been that these fallen angels came to the earth and ruled over different regions of the earth that were assigned to them when they were not fallen? Could it have been that these angels came to earth? Could it have been that these angels came to earth and ruled over different physical ground or physical territories? And normal men and women thought, oh, these are gods. Oh, let's worship these gods, let's bring these gods gifts. Could it have been that for years, women would have thought it would be a good thing to be chosen as one of their mates? To be chosen to procreate with them? Could it have been that these angels, fallen, not holy, could have ruled over different territories and regions on the earth? Now, some of you may be going, what is he talking about? What if we turn to Psalms eighty-two together? Let's turn to Psalms eighty-two. I know we're going fast. I know we're covering new ground. But let's go to Psalms eighty-two. Psalms eighty-two, verse one. Now, uh I have, I have my King James, my New King James here with me, and I have the ESV. ESV stands for the English Standard Version. Psalms eighty-two in the ESV says this. God has taken his place in the divine council. God has taken his place in the divine council. In the midst of the gods, he holds judgment. Psalms eighty-two. God has taken his place in the divine council. In the midst of the gods, he holds judgment. God sits among the divine council. Does that sound any, any, any bit familiar of, of earlier when we read where, where Satan says that, hey, I will, in, in Isaiah fourteen, I will also sit on the mount of the congregation of the farthest sides of the north. I will ascend into heaven. I will exalt myself above the stars of God. I will sit above the heights of the clouds. I will be like the Most High. What did Satan wanna do? He wants to sit in Psalms eighty-two, God has taken his place in the divine council. Many times in scripture, we hear statements like God saying in Genesis, which I didn't read, we skipped over it, Genesis, chapter three. He says, let us, or Genesis one, he says, let us make man in our image. He says, let us, who will go for us, Isaiah, who will go for us? God's not talking to himself. God's not having an internal conversation with God the Father, God the Son, God the Holy Spirit. He is having a conversation with his counsel. He's having a conversations with his sons. Could it be that God sits in the midst of his counsel? Could it be that God has all of his sons lined up, all of his counsel, all of his angels, all of his creation lined up? And he says, let us make man in our image. Let us, who will go for us? Who will tell the world of us? He says this in, in, in Psalms eighty-two. God has taken his place in the divine council. In the midst of the gods, he holds judgment. Well, what gods? These are under rulers. These aren't gods that are equal to Jesus, eh are equal to Jehovah. But the word Elohim isn't just uh reserved for God the Father. The word Elohim is a reference to gods. Hence, one of the very first commandments. Is it there just for wordplay? It says, thou shalt have no other gods before me. Hey Cameron, don't worship one of my fallen angels. Don't worship another god, another under ruler. Now, now how crazy would it be that we would worship angels? Well, more times than not, when an angel shows up, what do men do? They fall down and start to worship the angel. The angel says, if they're from God, don't worship me, worship God. Stand up. But if you're a fallen angel and a man falls down to worship you, what are you gonna do? Hey, keep on worshiping me. I am God. I will ascend. God has sons that are under rulers across the earth. Some of those sons rebelled. And are using their authority, their control, and their power to destroy God's creation and pervert it. Others are upholding what God's asked them to do. Now, I know this may be stretching some of you, but, but we've gotta lay the groundwork so that we can comprehend it. If, if, so let's keep reading Psalms eighty-two. God has taken his place in the divine council. In the midst of the gods, he holds judgment. So who's supreme? Who's El- Elion? God the Father. But he has other under rulers with him that are referred to as gods, little g gods, not to be worshipped. Just given positions of power and authority. This is God talking. How long will you judge unjustly and show partiality to the wicked? Who's he talking to? His under rulers. Verse three, give justice to the weak and the fatherless. Maintain the right of the afflicted and the destitute. Rescue the weak and the needy, deliver them from the hand of the wicked. Verse five, they have neither knowledge nor understanding. They walk about in darkness. All the foundations of the earth are shaken. Verse six, listen to what God Supreme, El- Elion, the Most High says. You are gods, sons of the Most High. Who's he talking to? All of you, nevertheless. See, he's judgment. This is judgment. Nevertheless, like men, you shall die and fall like any prince. And verse eight will blow your mind. Arise, O God, judge the earth, for you shall inherit all the nations. Who is God? Who inherits the nations? None other than Jesus Christ. For our Jehovah Witness friends and our Mormon friends who don't believe Jesus is God, they can't get away from this verse. Arise, O God, judge the earth, for you shall inherit the nations. Well, all we gotta do is track through scripture, Psalms two, the temptation in the desert. Satan's trying to tempt Jesus, hey, you want the nations? You want the nations? You want the real inheritance? Worship me, worship me. Satan, a fallen angel, tries to get God Supreme, El- Elion, to worship him. When, when holy angels show up to Samson's mom, to, to uh Zachariah, or Zacharias, the, uh John the Baptist's dad. When angels from God show up to deliver a message, mankind tries to worship them. How is it so far-fetched to believe that pre-flood fallen angels could come to the earth in the form of men, but yet have supreme powers, have, have fallen angel knowledge and information, and people not worship them? Here's my suggestion. Fallen angels come to the earth. They watch mankind out of the rebellion. They decide to come and rule over men. They teach men how to, uh um they teach them witchcraft. They teach them metallurgy. They teach them seduction. They teach them the art of war. They seduce the women. They procreate and develop a race of beings called the Nephilim, the giants. Now, as far-fetched as some of you may have just thought, I want you to run through all that you know about Greek mythology. I want you to run through all that you know about Zeus and, and Medusa, and Achilles, and, and Gaia, and all these different Greek gods and goddesses. In Greek mythology, you have gods who have earthly wives, and then produce a character or a person like Achilles. And Achilles is this godlike warrior with human uh frailty. So he's indestructible except this little part of his Achilles heel. If you could strike him there, you'll surely get him. In Greek mythology, those beings or those characters are called Titans. The Greek word for gigante, or the Hebrew word for giant, is the word gigante. And the Greek, or the Hebrew word for giant, or Nephilim, is the word gigante. The Greek interpretation for that word is Titan. When we look at our mythology, could it be that our mythology is rooted in partial truth? There's not some Greek guy that went out to the desert one day and says, you know what, I'm just gonna write me a bunch of Greek mythology. Could it be that they historically based some of it out of truth? Here's what I'm getting at. And we'll pick up here next time, and, and I know that we're covering some uncharted territory. But I wanna make this proposal to you. That pre-flood fallen angels are ruling the world. They are ruling mankind. And as we read in eighty-two, Psalms eighty-two, they're not protecting the weak, they're exploiting the weak. They're not teaching people to repent, they are teaching them to sin. And God says, I will judge you fallen angels, I will judge you sons of God as mere mortals or mere men. You'll die like a man. You were a prince. You used to be exalted. Oh, how you fallen Lucifer. Let, let's, let's, let's just go back and look at some, oh, how you fallen, oh Lucifer, son of the morning. This is God's creation, his son that rebelled. God's like, you exalt, you said, I will, I will, I will, I will, I will. Five times, Satan, you said, I will. And it was all about you, your lust for knowledge and power. But I'll respond to you in Ezekiel twenty-eight. You were, you were, you were, you were, you were. And now look at you. If he said that about Satan, what about the other fallen angels? We'll read in, in the book of Daniel, we'll read in some other scriptures in our Bible, where the fallen angels have left their proper abode. Let's look at Jude. It's in our notes. I wanna cover Jude, the, the the long book of Jude, Jude, verse five. So la- second to the last book in your Bible, Jude, verse five. It says this. It says, and the angels who did not, verse six, Jude, verse six, the angels who did not keep their proper domain, but left their own abode. He is reserved in everlasting change under darkness for the judgment of the great day. Talking about the tribulation. Here, here's my argument, or here's my suggestion. Start to read your notes. Read these Bible verses over and over and over, and ask the Lord for understanding. Here's my proposal to you. Fallen angels come to the earth. They rule men, they are treated as gods. All of the gods of all the pagan cultures point their worship back to one, one being. These fallen angels create Nephilim with the offspring with women. These Nephilim are considered superior beings. They're mighty men of renown, the Bible calls them. They're great men of renown. They are strong, they are big, they are massive, they are war machines, but they are perverting mankind. God in Genesis six looks at Noah and says, a man who's perfect in his generations. I will preserve Noah, Shem, Ham, Japheth, their four wives, and I will destroy the rest. Because the perversion of the bloodline. The flood has huge, um, has huge consideration in your Bible. We'll pick up there next week. We'll pick up with our fir- our fourth point. Thank you so much for joining us. We will pick up with the watchers and the counterattack. We'll pick up with the perversion of the DNA and our bloodline. We'll pick up, and we will eventually connect this with today. So I know we covered a lot. God bless you. We'll see you next time. Next Tuesday night, six-thirty, same place, same time, right here, we will pick up uh with the watchers and the um the counterattack of Satan and his uh cohorts. God bless you. See you next time.